Meeting to order at 5 o'clock. The first on the agenda is a roll call. Max Uly, sir.
Max, you're present.
Phil McMillan, present. Tom Phath. The next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. In front of you, you have minutes from, we have some housekeeping to do. We have April, June, and July, and that's, this is my, or August. Yeah. I had a little bit of catch-up to do there, and that's my fault. Yeah, these are kind of brief notes on kind of a lot of discussion that took place. And then also, I encourage if anyone wants to, our planning commission meetings are available on YouTube for exact discussion. Some of it, I think, it's actually going back, interesting going back through, especially on the joint zoning ordinance, directions we've gone with that. But I think we're heading in the right direction. With that, I'd like to, anyone who would like to entertain a motion, do our motion?
I'll make the motion of approval of minutes.
I'll second.
Phil made the motion. Max, second. And all those, or any discussions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed for April 3rd, June 5th, and August 7th. All right, old business, the joint zoning ordinance, this has been on our agenda for probably the last year and a half, two years. We finally got, I think, very positive direction on this. Last meeting, I mentioned that we had a cancellation with Doug Beege due to a conflict with one of his clients. So, we rescheduled. We met on the 30th. It was Randy, Lori, Charlie, and myself. Well, we determined that Randy and Doug had a lot of discussion on where we'd been, where we'd come from, and we talked about scope and who'd be doing what. And I think it cleared up a lot of the items we had concerns with on how we would tailor it and how Doug can help us tailor this at affordable cost to the town. Basically, the way scope's gonna be divvied up is Charlie is gonna make a sheet with all the possible changes or additional restrictions we need to add to the ordinance. At one point, we had talked about deleting sections out of the ordinance, and Doug Beege recommended we not do that. If you don't have anything in place, you have nothing in place. So, we're gonna be more, if we have to be more restrictive, we can be more restrictive. One of the things that was brought up was on chickens in town. That's probably something we're gonna discuss more, but the way we read in the county would be different than the way it would be in the town. We'd be more restrictive in the town. So, we don't just delete that section out. We need to detail it, make it more restrictive. Right now, we have no chickens in town. So, if we want that to stay that way, we have to make that restriction. That's just one example. So, Charlie started a list, he's continuing that list. Once Charlie finishes that list, it'll be passed on to Doug Beege to tailor and see how we need to update that ordinance.
You sort of timeframe what they need to?
What I understood is Charlie was gonna give me something in a week or two. I could narrow him down to date. From there, Doug made it sound like it was gonna go pretty fast. I mean, just in that meeting, Charlie had four or five just examples, and Doug was able to hash through them very quickly. Everyone seemed generally on board with it. I think Randy wasn't able to be here. I would, I don't know if the planning commission needs to make a recommendation to the council, but what we had discussed was a budget of like $5,000 in order to see if that would be what we would think would be affordable cost to the town, or to present to the council. I don't think, well, he said $2,500 to five grand originally. I told him to make it a budget of five grand. If there's other parts, other things that we needed to add on later on, we probably could. He mentioned like a code enforcement section that's not in there. That's something the county doesn't have, but a little work mission should do. He said if you have nothing in place, you don't have any way to...
Well, you don't have any teeth.
Yeah. He said you don't have to hire somebody for that role, but it's there when the time comes. But that was one example. A floodplain ordinance, that's not part of the joint zoning ordinance. That's something that units about, or La Porte, Michigan City, the county does separately because it changes all the time with I.D.M. Then the floodplain ordinance, what I understand, is important if you're ever trying to get FEMA money. So, that's kind of a, I guess, brief update.
Can you go over who was at this meeting again?
Who was at the meeting was Lori Mercer, Charlie Ray, Doug Beege.
When was it?
It was the 30th.
Well, I think that we can make a motion tonight, even though the attorney's not here, we can make a motion to recommend this to the council.
I think so.
For the budget. So, I'd make that motion.
I'll second the motion. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meaning none? Motion passed. And I would like to say, it did seem like Randy was, I mean, Randy was on board with it, him getting in front of Doug. I think they hit it off pretty well on an understanding of what we need to do. It kind of took out a lot of the concerns that were there. And then, I think Charlie, the big, we're gonna have to really encourage Charlie to get that list done. We'll have to see if he's gonna need, how much help he's gonna need on it. He'll be at our next meeting, for sure. What I saw coming through the ropes was a, I think, a subdivision proposal. I think the church, some Randy meant, there's a mention of this church up on, I think it's on 421. They wanna change lot lines. I think the house is like attached to the house and the church are one parcel, and they're wanting to separate the house so they can sell it. So, they have to change lot lines, and I think they have to. That was another example why our ordinance is not very good, is because they have to go through a whole subdivision process to change lot lines. So...
Will you be getting the...
Randy will be the one sending out that information on that, on the subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah.
Will you be getting this list together before you present it to the town council? Or...
Yeah, Charlie will be sending it to us to review.
And where exactly is the search?
I think it's on 4th, I think it's one on 421.
Right on. Right, before the doctor's office and the car wash on the side. Okay. You're in charge, you can help that.
I've waited that for a while.
Okay. It is, yeah.
It's been, I've heard about this thing for a while. It's been on the table for like a year.
Okay.
And that's another example of like, someone trying to do, that should be like a minor subdivision and still go through a lot more process, just to do something simple.
Just wondering with this meeting on the 30th, was there a rest of a quorum?
No.
Okay.
I apologize. I just, I got, lost track of it. That's my fault. Definitely not keeping up on all my stuff, and I apologize for not getting into you last minute.
No problem.
Because we had dates, the dates that, trying to get between Randy, Doug, and I just, I lost track of trying to get everyone to get their hardest people to get, you know, getting all the, both attorneys on the table at the same time, plus Charlie there. I just lost track of it. That's my fault. The meeting lasted probably about, we were in there for about an hour, I think. But there was no rest of a quorum because it was just myself there. Lori's not on the planning commission. And then we had Charlie Ray, building commissioner, attorney. Other than that, any other, anyone else want to bring up anything regarding the joint zoning ordinance?
You know, it's gonna be really interesting to see what direction we go, you know, as far as with the individual ordinances that we keep and how we're able to, you know, put some steps in there to enforce them. I think there, the town, there's a lot of quality of life that, you know, you could help kind of develop steps for with that type of framework in place.
Definitely. I mean, and that's, I mean, there, it'll give us a tool to make that happen. And it's gotta be, I mean, I was even thinking, next year, it's like, why don't we, the planning commission or beautification committee and some local organizations, I mean, there needs to be a push of beautification in the town, like a big push, whether it's businesses, whether it's homes. To encourage people to lift it up. It doesn't have to be the crack of the whip either. It can be the, just the positive push forward. One thing Doug Beege did mention was, was that, I think they got the funding reserved for the double tracking of South Shore to get the Scott, I think that's supposed to limit the travel to Chicago by train to 50 minutes. They're anticipating that to really help Michigan City boom, but they're also looking at Westville, you know, how that can impact Westville. Because now you can let the rural community get Chicago in 50 minutes, or an hour.
I think the big benefit of these additional, you know, ordinances that would be in place in a traditional language that would be in place, is it would make more clear, you know, what options you have, you know, to enforce that framework. Like, I feel like, it was talked about in the newspaper recently, you know, how there is kind of a vague nuisance ordinance that's on the books here in Westville. And it uses language like anything that would reduce quality of life or reduce property values and things of that nature, you know, could be considered a nuisance and subject to $100.5.
But that's real subjective.
It is, it is. So, as you have something that has a little bit, you know, clearer language in the ordinances, well, then you have an idea of how to proceed, and you have an idea of what's inside the lines and what's outside the lines. I think that's important for everybody going forward, you know? That way, you don't feel like, you know, some people are in the cool kids club and some people aren't, you know, as far as who gets hit with what and who's held to what standards.
Yeah.
But as far as, you know, the quality of life in town, you know, I think to be able to enforce something, to be able to establish some clear standards and then enforce them, you know, I just think it's a good thing, you know, as far as, you know, appearances of homes and as far as, you know, things to help the beautification committee, you know, like, I know my parents, they have to listen to beanbags until 3:00 in the morning, and my mom has suggested that we install a bird bath out in front of the house to wash people's mouths out, so, you know, from time to time.
Yeah.
And it's just quality of life, stuff like that, it would be neat to, you know, to be able to say, this is inside the lines and this is outside the lines.
That's one of the things too, Doug Beege did mention, was cleaning out a lot of our ordinances that are there on the books. And we have a lot of amendments, 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 but just to have, consolidate them, a lot of them all over the time. Randy was on board with that too, because...
Yeah, because what's happened, and Randy's been a part of this, is that we've been reactive. We do an amendment because we're reacting to an issue that came up. And we do need cleaning up, we really do.
There's a problem with that, is with, how do you interpret? It gets confusing when you start adding amendments to ordinances.
It does, it does. As you're adding an amendment to address one issue at that time, that's right before you, and then, it may be a year from now, you've got another issue, somewhat like it, but not quite. So, how do you address that?
And that could happen over how many years?
Oh, yeah, well...
You could have one pass and then...
The 20 years I've been on the council, we've done that 20 years. And they've done it way before I came. So, yeah, it's been done forever.
Well, that would help too, with making a clear cut. And then if someone, if, we do have, if anyone in town wants to, well, what is this ordinance? They don't have to go through.
Yeah.
Think about, you know, how confusing it is. You know, you have to trace back and forth, back and forth. That's kind of the, I mean, we have a huge opportunity with the town, and we have to get ready for this, that there is, there is a sudden boom in our population. You gotta have a joint, your joint zoning ordinance updated to allow for that to happen. You gotta have your ordinances in place and cleared for people that are wanting to come in here. I mean, I think that's gonna be real important, because we're gonna be facing what different challenges we have to face now. It may be some of the same, but I think it's important to keep clearing it out.
I was in a meeting today, uh, for lunch, and the executive director of Save the Dunes spoke, and that was one of the things that she talked about, was that with the double rail, that there's going to be so much growth, and it's not gonna be just in Michigan City. It's going to be with South. And there's a lot that has to be resolved. I mean, you can, the growth can be absorbed and not lose the integrity of the dunes, but that is the same with us. We can absorb a lot, but we can't lose our integrity as a small community. And most people that live here want to maintain that small community lifestyle. Let's hear more amendment, amendment, amendment. So, but I thought it was interesting she was talking about.
It was, and it like, maybe it's a good opportu, opportunity on the new business to talk about annexation. Because that's another thing you brought up, is if you are with the annexation, it can be really important that you have your framework, you know, your comprehensive plans updated, which we're gonna be due soon to update that in the next year or two. Joint zoning ordinance, keeping that current, and then also having an idea of where we need to grow. And that's what we discussed last meeting, is have us all get together and start sketching out areas and what makes the most sense for Westville. You know, we can look at our comprehensive plan, what they have. The comprehensive plan does have some areas kind of detailed out. I think you had McNair's property on there. I think McNair was part of that.
At that time, they were very cooperative with that, so...
Yeah. So, that's like, that's an easy one to look at, but then also, I think Darren, you know, mentioned how much we service the apartments by T&amp;W.
Yeah, I think that's realistic, too, to think about that.
Yeah. And then with possibility of more development down south, I think it's important for us to meet on that. Does it, does anyone have any dates that they would like to throw out there for meeting?
What time, timeframe would you like to go?
I'd probably, I can do it during the day, most days, but I can do it, I could probably do, what's best for me is if I could do it around 4:30. I can. I don't like to stretch too much into the family time. I can avoid it, but if you can...
Yeah, I'm the same, but it's a great time for me.
4:30 is great for me to, I'm about 18, my top five. You're in La Porte?
Yeah, I'm the commercial lending department.
Oh, how long you been there?
I think I, I may have told you that, you know Steve Crane is my boss.
Yeah. Okay, that's when you moved in. Oh, I did not realize that. I knew it was your boss, but I didn't realize you had moved.
Okay.
That's important. Love it. Okay. Well, good for you. Thank you.
I can do, what, Fridays, Brandon, have you got some?
It's early enough, dude. I think, if I, when I do have Friday plans, I mean, it's well after that.
Friday, I almost off Friday afternoon.
Are you?
Yeah, Fridays work after.
Fridays work after for me.
How about you, Matt?
I, I get up at 4:00 at 5:00, so...
If anybody wanted to join in afterwards, they could. We could do it more like a workshop. It's gonna be more of a workshop-type setting. Do we want to, would it be, do you want, do we want to do it right away, like next Friday, or do we wanna do it two?
I think next Friday is 5:00.
The 13th?
Friday the 13th. There you go.
Good day. Started off right.
I don't know why I can make the 13th guys, but if the majority can, go ahead and do it.
Okay. And if we have a small group, that goes, we don't have a more, that's fine too. We could just, Friday the 13th. I mean, if you show up, you know, late, that's all right too. I think we're just, I'm gonna try to get a big map like that.
What time were you gonna be? 4:30 you said?
4:30 PM. Is there any other tools we might need? I could email out a CAD file or a PDF of that too, if people prefer doing it more on a computer or a laptop or something. Charlie has that in CAD, you know, that...
Yeah, maybe kind of like, if you can get the DWG or the DXF CAD file, you can send it out.
Yeah. And then I will do, I'll do a PDF of it too.
Is that on AutoCAD?
And one thing I'd like to mention with this too, is we're, we're getting really close on the GIS, and that's gonna have a huge opportunity for the town. I looked at Hebron and a couple other towns, a couple of towns in Wisconsin, what they're doing with it. They're using it for building inspections, zoning, they're labeling all their assets in town. They're even using it to bid up trees in some community. They literally have a picture and identity for every tree in their community. When they do work, they send out those trees to contractors, and when they get done, they gotta take, they price it, and they get done, they take a picture and upload it with their work. So, there's literally the paperwork that's gotta go in the way. They do that with manholes, when they camera lines and different things. And that's not a lot of cost either, that's something. It's already kind of built into the Art, I think it, Art GIS.
Okay.
Porter County, I think, uses it. So, I think it'll be, it'll be a good opportunity. We're starting off, we're doing all our water, sewer, assets, and then from there, I even tell them, they just, they had a, they actually took their new plant on CAD, put it into the GIS, and they have all their O&amp;Ms on the GIS. That's not, probably not gonna be a, that's not really gonna be public, but for the community, you know, like as part of your O&amp;M street equipment. But you can do layers to where you can have it more accessible to public. Like, once we get it updated with that stuff like zoning and all that, we could actually send that to La Porte County and have them put it on the La Porte County map, that's another add, if we work with the...
Who's gonna be the keeper of that? Who's gonna keep that updated?
Some, McMahon and Associates, they were hired. So, they're the engineer, but the goal of keeping it updated is us. Right now, we're going around with our staff and locating all the different assets, and then their Midwest contract operations to keep costs down, they're going down and using the ONE and marking all our valves and our assets. So, and then, like, that information just goes to McMahon, they upload it. But mostly updating, it's gonna be by us by 12:00?
Um, okay, so, but McMahon's actually gonna be doing the CAD work?
Yes, like the framework of it all, that's gonna be...
And I'm talking about like, five years from now, you're still gonna call McMahon, and they're gonna pull the file up, and they're gonna update it, and then you'll always have the most current file.
Yes, and it's all updated live. Like, if you call them, the change is made there. Our guys can actually make marks on their phone, and it can be filed, exact location can be filed up at a later date. Like, if we have manholes that aren't on there, they can actually go out to GIS with their phone, mark it, upload it to the file, what it was, and then it gets flagged with a note. And then, say next year, we kind of update all those notes, if we have to send MTO back out to ONE, a couple more things, we can do that.
I was working for Crown Engineering out in Portage, a guy that worked a couple doors down from me, was like the keeper of the Ogden Dunes CAD file. And it was only because of the founder of that company lived in Ogden Dunes, and so in the eighties or something, he was like, hey, we need this. And so, from the eighties on, you know, they had an electronic file that they, that was a living document, and so it's constantly being updated. And so, a few hours a week, this guy would be on there, you know, doing that work, and it was a company, kind of, the company just was a good, they kind of did it, you know, because the founder was from there.
Yeah. Well, actually, and that's important to keep it up. Having it from the eighties is incredible. They keep information just passed down, and that's the beauty, having one person doing it.
Right.
I, one nice thing, I think, even though McMahon's doing it, this is our information, it'll be, any, if we had to get another, and, you know, say McMahon, say they get lost hold, or, you know, we can, we still have access to our information, so...
Well, that, and it's standard enough that you can bring anybody in and do it, you know, like you could update CLE, update it, or, yeah, there's all, any number of people that do that kind of thing.
Yeah. And that's why I feel more safe. We used to keep everything on CAD, and the issue was, you know, that, having that CAD updated and if something gets corrupted or lost, and you lose that, all of a sudden, lose that file here.
Right.
So, we basically had that circumstance, but we were able to get most of the information. Dan Woodruff really helped us. He was, he kept a lot of stuff up to date, and he helped us get that file back and a good start for what we're doing on that.
Okay, okay.
So, very grateful for him. But, but that's kind of, I wanted to, that was one of my points that I wanted to bring up too, with the GIS, because I think that's gonna be a cool tool for us in annexation and then plus on zoning, as you get zoning maps up. I'd like to incorporate ours with the county, and then we can actually overlay our stuff with theirs.
Is that a done deal that we're using right now, or is that something that we're still kind of looking at purchasing?
It's a done.
Okay.
We got the, they're, I think, probably 50% complete with it. Right now, like I said, we, the only thing we're, framework we put into it right now is water and sewer, and we might do some storm, I think, if we should storm it. There's not very much in town, but it's a lot of catch patients, I think. Any, any other thoughts on annexation? I think the next step was to have that meeting, and that's when we got set up. The last thing I had on the agenda was a gateway sign. Lori brought this up back in her April meeting, working on the 421, 421 and 2 sign. I think she did get in contact with IED, NDOT, about putting the sign on their right away, and I think there was a lot more paperwork involved. She ended up working, working with Nutterm Associates, which is what I'm also part of, and there's, what we did was did a, like a lease for 50 years for $51, for like a 20 by 80 foot section on the corner. That would be the southwest corner, coming into Westville. So, we worked, that, that was the lease, I think, was passed by the council a week ago.
And, yeah, yeah, and you signed the conflict and...
Yeah, the conflict.
Yeah.
And that was passed before that.
Yeah.
So, I'm a very small, small person at that, partner, so...
But you took yourself completely out of it, so...
Yes, and I recuse my vote. I'm excited though that it's, the opportunity is there.
Sure.
I think it's gonna be nice.
Yeah.
Very nice.
That's the first line going up, so like, I'm sitting above a chopper.
Well, the sign at the park center is nice, too. They got that out. That's really nice. The patch will be really, really, a nice picture.
Yeah.
Eventually, we'll have all the entrances, hopefully.
Yeah, I think, that's something to keep, they're looking for the next location. And I think that we do have like, there's a land lease agreement, so if there is somebody that knows somebody on an entrance, I think we got a really easy way to do it now.
Okay.
So, I think that's the easiest way to do. I think, you know, but, I don't know, buying a property is pretty expensive, if you're buying a section on a, off a highway.
Right.
So, it's better to, highway front, it's, you're better off doing the lease.
Right.
Yeah. And then somebody that really cares and wants it, you know? There's people out there that want to have that sign in there, so... But just keep that in mind. Definitely want something to the south, and then eventually on the six and two, once they get the construction on the roundabout.
What heard you about the roundabout?
Last I heard was his correspondence regarding the big storm covert concrete structure that goes underneath by the wastewater plant, by the center. They were tearing that out, I think, for the Crown PAC, or I think that's part of that project, and then, I think they were final, finalizing locating the water line. I think they got that updated on the map, and I think that was, and last I heard, I think it was McMahon was working on what we're gonna do with our water line crossing. I think the way the roundabout hat overlaps, it actually overlaps our stuff a little bit, so the water line's gonna have to be moved, or it'll be very expensive for the town to fix that.
I heard some people talking in Michigan City, and they were talking about a roundabout.
In Michigan City?
Yeah, they were talking about having a roundabout, and they wondered how big it's gonna be. So, I, I think it's gonna be pretty concise, it's gonna accommodate semis, and they would just blow it away. Just can't wait to see it.
I'm excited too. I mean, you figure, you think about those trucks that bring the, the rotor blades in for the windows and that, go that route.
Yeah. That's when you have to see CNN negotiate that, you know?
Right. It's gonna have to have a guy with the hook and ladder truck that cheers the back of the trailer, you know?
I've seen those, and they drive by a 420, I've seen them go, they must've gone 2 to 421, or they, they probably couldn't get under, it was right in front of our office, but I don't think they could fit one of, a truck like that. It'd be hard to get under the bridge in North Oak Southern Line, it's got a height restriction. But I wonder if they're going 2 to 421.
I don't know. I don't know, I remember seeing an awful lot of them a few years ago that were running, uh, they were coming from the port of Indiana, and so they would come south on one forty nine, they come six to the east, and then they turn south on four twenty one, you know, to head to the wind farm, so they were putting those up. And so, that's where I'd seen the most of them, and so I knew that followed that route. Because it's, a lot of them are, you know, they're, they're imported, so they bring them into the port, you know, and get them to this region. So they've got to come down six.
They have something, oh my gosh.
There's a lot that comes down six to the, hopefully doesn't make people steer away from. Now, you got your pass, but some people stop here, will be passing through. I wonder if we'll lose pass through traffic if they put a roundabout in or not? Or if it's the only route they can go, though.
I think we're gonna absolutely lose pass through traffic. I think it's gonna, what it's gonna do is it's gonna force people to, uh, to not come to the west on six, and you're just gonna head north and you're gonna get on a toll road, or you're gonna have to go that route, or you're gonna have to take thirty.
Yeah, yeah, thirty.
That you, yeah, sorry. My dad's a tune, I can pay you, no, I'm not paying you.
I know right now, with the intersection as it is, it's really tough when it's thirty, around eight.
Oh, yeah.
I was, I stopped there this morning and it's like, no one knew. I think I had to stop and extra three cars could.
I sat thirty minutes tonight trying to get home on four twenty one with the paving.
Oh, yeah.
I've never seen such a mixed up affair with getting, controlling the traffic. They let the northbound just go and go and go. I sat there thirty minutes while traffic was going north. Not one time did they stop it in thirty, thirty minutes.
Wow.
And the other morning, I went to work and sat twenty-five minutes.
Yeah, I, I took wasn't it, to Michigan City yesterday and I was in business, just because I wanna deal with it.
Yeah, uh, this morning, I went up County Line. I should've done that tonight, but.
Roll the dice.
I thought surely they won't still be out there with.
Yeah, I've heard that.
Do they have that one side closed? I go in Michigan City later, is the one side closed off the traffic?
It depends if they're still, they might be.
If they're not doing it, well, you're gonna be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing, if they're not still there, I might work together, you know? It's amazing, I've never seen such a formidable way of controlling traffic.
I heard they do long, they've been doing long time stretches like that with traffic.
Oh, it's horrible. And one guy, he got out of his car, about two or three cars in front of him, got out of his car and he's standing in the middle of the road and, and his body language shows that he was not reacting.
I can imagine.
And I thought, ooh, cause I know, I was thinking, why are we doing this? Why are we sitting here thirty minutes? There's thirty minutes, boys and girls.
Regarding, one last thought on the gateway sign.
Yeah.
Do we wanna go, because we're looking at annexing as far south as, you know, as like grocery warehouse. I know, I don't think we're down that far yet, but, you know, would we wanna look at maybe the intersection of six and four twenty one there to the south?
My, I think that's a good idea.
I thought, I think, you know, it doesn't, I think maybe Steve Jack runs that.
Hello.
So it might be a good idea to reach out to him. You know, and I, I know him a little bit, so I wouldn't mind talking to him, but maybe you got a better relationship tonight.
I think that'd be great, Kurt, I think, Kurt's done a lot.
But yeah, I think Kurt would get on board, and I think that would be a good place to put a sign.
Yeah, I mean, that's the end goal. Well, yeah, it'd be worth a conversation with Kurt. We can, we meet Friday too, and we draw out this annexation map, that'll help us.
Yeah, it would be something tangible to, to show him, you know, where, where things are going and, you know, see if he can help us out with that.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, cause he almost gotta look to the future. One thing nice about the signs that Laura did, if we ever did have to tear it, relocate it, I think we could pretty easily, cause it's not a brick structure or something, it's posts and the sign itself, so I don't think it would be too incredibly expensive to relocate if we ever have to. So, that's a good point. He mentioned down by, oh, four twenty one and six.
Yeah, yeah, there's probably the, the intersection to the north of the caddy corner to the grocery warehouse. I'd say kind of on that, you know, that northeast corner there.
Yeah, we could even, even, North Point might even own some property that may be wanting to, be worth asking them too, at the warehouse.
Okay, well, you'd, you'd be putting it to the left, but.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, if you're heading north into town, I think you wanna have it on the right hand side.
Yeah, you're right.
Predominantly where your focus is, but.
Yeah, it's better for them to focus, yeah. Trying to envision with Kurt, I know where Kurt has his property down there, so it's right by.
I was under the impression, I know he's got the place, it's just south of the tracks on the east side.
Yeah.
But I was also under the impression that he had lands that was, uh, just in the north of four twenty one there. North of six there, thanks to that too.
That'd be worth asking them. I'd be, just putting it just outside of where we are, city limits now, to try to, I mean, that could set their future goal, why not? And it looks like it.
Can we do that, if there's anything that would be prohibiting us from doing that?
I don't know, I think if you did like a, a land lease, I mean, you'd be under the county's sign emergency.
Yeah, you'd, yeah, that would be.
You'd have to abide by the county's, or, uh, sign emergency. So we just have to look at that, how that works, especially if we're, we'd be treated as a different entity. We can sign up on their property, so I don't know how that works.
I don't know either, because you're saying that town limits on county property. So I don't know how that would work.
Well, I don't know, we put it on, you, you're saying it's in, it's inside of jurisdiction of county, not so much like county owned property, right?
Would make any difference, they, they have control of all the ordinances within the county.
Okay.
So we would have to go with fair ordinances, and I don't know that they would, and you'd only have to ask, I guess, Bill, but I don't know that they would want to accept a town of Westville, a town sign on their property, on, on their land, that they would be governing it.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Sure.
And I'm only saying that because, it's, it will be on a record, because we've not always been able to get along well with the county.
Okay.
County likes to just walk over and, and, and small communities they have, over the past years have just walked over. Like Dollar General, Dollar General is not on our sewer or water either one. They're on a well and a septic. And they should be on, on our, our infrastructure, because if they're available to them. But they kind of let that happen. It's like with the subdivision going out, uh, back to school. One side of it is on our sewer and water, one side's not. And the county let that happen.
Oh, okay.
So, there's, they've not always been user friendly, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, maybe too, you know, maybe we don't wanna poke the bear and go and put us, you know.
Start they have the.
Before we have it, you know, cause we might, we might gain an adversary.
Yeah, and I.
In the annexation process.
And I'm hoping that, you know, with the G I S, with us doing the joint zoning ordinance, working with the county, county wants to grow, we wanna grow.
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna have to grow together, just like Michigan City, you know?
Well, this is the first time that there's been a friendliness between the small communities and the county.
Yeah.
The, the people in power now are much more user friendly than they've ever been. So, if we've got that going, I'd hate to do something to, to cause a problem.
And then, us having utilities is very important for development in the county. And I think we've already, like, we have utilities that go out to the North Point facility. Um, there's more opportunity for the corrections, those conversations have started back up again.
Yeah, that's good.
So, those are going in a good, uh, direction again. So, I mean, if, you know, if we ever do tie in with, if that opportunity works out, I mean, that's right, that infrastructure's all going south, that'll be for them, but there might be an opportunity, you know? I, who knows, maybe North Point would wanna jump in on that opportunity too. And then you'd have more infrastructure ran up south of town. But getting water and sewer infrastructure is very important for big industrial businesses. If that is an opportunity, more opportunities are both down there.
Yeah, because the way it's set up now with the Dollar General, if anybody else wants to commercialize that area, because that is still Dr. Corr's property, and Dr. Corr sold it to Dollar General. So if anyone wants to commercialize that, then we've got this issue that maybe we could talk with the county once we get all our ordinances. And on zoning together, that we could say, hey, we've got infrastructure, we've got what you need, instead of them going on sewer or, uh, well and septic.
Well, yeah, the opposite, we'll just, yeah, the next one thing we can probably map on that piece, I can, we can probably sketch out where our existing infrastructure is. Really, basically, now, we got maps of where South Coast, South Coast has their infrastructure, but we can kind of map on where our stuff is south of town. I can bring that to the meeting for us to do some of that. That'd be helpful to kind of see what's got infrastructure in the area and what doesn't, so. Um, one other thing I wanted to bring up, I talked to a gentleman from Dollar General, and then he said, he said that this, this frozen storage, or frozen storage facility in Westville and where their, made their distribution center, it's like one of the only, their nearest one is like states away. So it's kind of cool that they, I, once again, it's why they picked Westville and, you know, just outside of Westville and the airport. But they're ramping up, I guess, soon to start hiring people, so they have it already. I, what I heard, it was A J John, so, it might be a couple, few more of that in local area, local economy.
Are there any other, um, companies that's moved in out there yet? I know the trucking firm's there.
We, I think, uh, the economic development reached out to us just for more information on, um, our water and sewer utilities. And that, that kinda, that was maybe two weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
They don't really give you much information on who the client is, and they might've just had some list, you know, a list, you know, list, you know, had, uh, someone inquiring for a company, you don't even know who that company might be. But they were asking those questions of them, and I passed it back to them. One thing I was thinking about, I know we've had McMahon kind of work on some stuff, Charlie's worked on some stuff, and you need to just get a paper, so I can give it to the Leport County Economic Development and say, this is what they're. I've done it once, but we've gotten more information since then, and I think we could do that. And kind of, that way, the county can respond quickly. I think that was one of the reasons, North Point came here was because they responded quickly, and we were able to work with them. But I think we need to do that for, for us to listen.
Well, we got such a good start with working together with the county, I, I hope we can keep that going forward.
Yeah, I think it will.
I hope so.
Is there anything else anyone wants to discuss, or Ed?
No, I, I, I think regarding what we were saying about, uh, signs south of town, I don't think it's a bad idea to at least talk to the people who own the property, and whether it was, you know, I believe this gentleman's name is Mark Yan, he's the guy that owns the truck stop. That's where your, uh, your, your boundary is currently, and so you might put a sign there. Um, looking to the future, you know, down at six and four twenty one, you know, we could talk to, you know, landowner on that position, that way, when the opportunity comes up, you know, during annexation, which we planted the seed and, you know, a little easier. Yeah, I don't have any other thoughts on that.
I think that's a good thing to look towards the future, that's one thing I kept hearing over and over again. You know, if we don't get stuff, you have to have all this stuff together and prepared, otherwise, we won't be ready when it comes to it. We don't wanna be sitting here trying to figure stuff out. If, the, having stuff planned ahead of time for a town saves a lot of money than not having it planned ahead of time.
Oh, absolutely.
Pass through, um, stuff, and you can lose opportunities with it not planning stuff.
Yeah, if you don't have it up there so you can, they have a visual immediately, it, it, we're lost. It was lost, the whole thing, so. I'm, I'm just thrilled that you're doing all this, Tom, right now.
Well, it's everyone here.
No, I'm not doing anything.
But, um, Ed, one thing I'd like to say is, uh, was on last meeting's agenda, I wanna bring back up the pharmacy general letter, that's another thing I wanna keep us out in front of. We got a, a general support letter, so we talked about that, so.
And did you say that you were, I thought the where we left, we left that off was we're gonna see if we'd had one that had been drafted on file.
That's right, I have not done that yet. Ethan drafted a letter to a pharmacy, we gotta see what we can use from that.
Yep, he did.
So.
I think that was the name of the foundation's home family, or family home or something like that.
Where would that be?
It was in Wisconsin, I believe, might've been Minnesota, it was up north.
But the physical record of the correspondence, is that something we have here at the town hall?
We would have that here, I think.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We can, I know we have email records of it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'll look through my emails and see if I have it.
Okay, that's all public.
Yep.
Look at that, cause I think that'll be just something, or we could even post that on the website if we get something pulled together. Or we could just do a mail or something. But it, and Dave, that reason we brought that up is because Dave requested it. I haven't heard any more about it after we had our discussion.
Dave posted something on Facebook or Nextdoor, uh, about they had gotten in, Phil's had gotten in contact with them and told them that, um, they weren't gonna be doing anything here in Westville. So, it was a negative response.
I will keep on trying.
Yeah.
Was that anything else? Yeah, I'm entertaining most of you in here. One second. All as a favor.
Hi.
Opposed?